Good evening. It is Monday, June 20th, 2020. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting to order. Stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim, have you had a chance to take role?
We have taken role, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Move on to the consent agenda. So we have just the two items on the consent agenda, three items on the consent agenda this evening. Any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those consent agenda passes. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. Just want to remind everybody of our annual 3rd of July celebration out at the amphitheater. We have a wonderful concert scheduled with Kate Stevens, the Kansas City native local X Factor winner, and a wonderful fireworks show scheduled out there on July 3rd. So hope to see everybody out there. Please be patient with law enforcement and our volunteer parking staff. There'll be concessions available, and I believe this year alcohol available for purchase out there for the first time. So it's sponsored by our wonderful Knights of Columbus organization. So I hope to see everybody out at the festival grounds for our annual July 3rd celebration. Next, I want to provide an update on the interchange. Did I send you pictures, Jim? I was out there yesterday. I'll send them to you. But I, and I, I got, and I got my hard hat and vest, so I got in trouble for not wearing that when I was out there. But interchange is moving forward. I'm sure if you've not noticed, all the work and improvements out there. So I was out, I was out there yesterday, and they had a bunch of wire formed to pour some additional concrete to extend the underground storm sewer pipe. So it looks like things are going well there. I haven't heard anything further from Clarkson or MoDOT that would make us think otherwise. Last thing I have under Mayor's remarks this evening is I'm very pleased and excited to, if you have not already noticed, that another successful use tax project has been completed as promised. When we went to the voters and asked for approval of the use tax, this board was very specific on what we were going to utilize those funds for. And the Nation Road Sidewalk project is completed. I believe there may be some minor detail work to do, some backfill and some seeding. But thanks to staff for getting right on that project and giving us the opportunity to provide safe routes to schools, safe routes for adults and that connectivity project. So another project completed as promised by this board. That concludes my Mayor's remarks, and we'll move on to the Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, Lampry Neerson, our engineers, have been helping us negotiate with Kissick Construction using a City of Raytown contract that we can use to piggyback our project for sewer lining, similar to what corporate purchasing contracts are. It's recommended that we prepare a resolution that would authorize you to execute a contract with Kissick using probably updated prices from the Raytown 2021 contract. They can't hold the material pricing as the same, but they can, they were the low bidder on the project last year, and they wanted an opportunity to check that. This resolution would authorize the re-lining of Carney Manor subdivision sewer, which is the sewer line west of Marguerite Street from 92 Highway, south to 9th Street, and in Martin Place, a sewer line north of 11th Street from Prospect, west to its end near 33 Highway. And then in Southbrook, we have a sewer line on Geneva Street from 11th to Ada, south to Ada. We had originally secured a proposal from them for approximately $350,000 to do this work. We believe that the Raytown contract will be a much improved price for their same work. This has been floating around since 2019, and we're anxious to proceed and get this work under contract. It has been budgeted. So I have one picture in the agenda packet that shows the insides of probably the worst piece of pipe there, but it's certainly one that's, that's, that one right there is about in Kate Sewell's yard. And we've got her yard tore up, and so we're anxious to follow through. We were going to try to get it to it from the surface, but we can't. And we need to get to it from the inside. So I have a resolution prepared if the board would like to consider that.
Donnie, do you have anything else to add on that report?
No, this one's been on the agenda for a while. This part that he's got pictured in here is concerning to me because it's right next to two foundations. That's why we can't open big it. I would really like to get it repaired before it falls in because then you have to open big it.
As we know, our list is much larger than this, and hopefully this is something on an annual basis we can start addressing, luckily I have been the water mains. Any questions from the board? If not, if you want to read the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Kissick Construction to re-line sewer mains in Carney Manor, Martin Place, and Southbrook.
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to bring to the attention of the board that we have been working with. Greg Rotis has been hauling our sludge since 2015, actually before that, but we formalized a contract in 2015 that was for five years. He religiously been hauling it at $20 per ton, no increase. And so it should have expired in 2020. He's carried on and kept that price. He proposes to increase the price to $34 per ton. That's a huge increase. We recognize that. But we discussed ideas of doing fuel surcharges, equipment subsidies, and issues like that. But he prefers to keep it a flat, simple contract with an amount that would raise our costs from $87,000 a year to $150,000 a year. And while we simply know of no competitive services that are available, and we will continue to evaluate and seek options that, and we're in discussions with our engineer, but the information our engineer brings us would reinforce that this is a reasonable price. So I will be bringing a contract forward and simply advise you that our costs are going to go up, and I'll have to do a budget amendment as well with that. You'd think, well, we can do a capital investment and do it ourselves. Well, by the time we do all that, it's hard to beat that price. And so we're, all I can say is we're going to continue to aggressively evaluate that. That is a cost that, well, we'd like to work on if at all possible. But Greg has been giving us good service, and we do appreciate that, so.
I also like us not hauling and removing the sludge or it takes liability off of the city as well.
If I may, there's one other thing with this contract. When, when he first did the contract, it was a five-day-a-week contract. He hauls for us seven days a week. We've got the van press running seven days a week.
Yes, he comes and delivers on Sundays and Saturdays, which was never contemplated. So that helps us run our press on the weekends.
Get that service anywhere else.
Yeah.
So he's, he's done that without increasing pricing.
Right.
And that is very commendable. I do, I do want to mention, though, in this letter that he does say that that price will increase $2 a year for up to 10 years. So we might.
We, we did negotiate that away.
Oh, did you?
Yes. Yes, he said he would do the $34 and keep it flat. And he's asking for a five-year commitment on that.
I thought it said 10.
Well, he was wanting a 10, but I always talk to him when negotiating to that out.
Oh, you're negotiating.
So, so we're, and we're approached our engineer, our, our new attorneys to help us draft an agreement. And so we're going to also ask for an early termination clause and see how, seeing how far, you know, he's willing to have been. But he has negotiated some things away from that original, so.
Seems like you should strike while the iron is hot.
We will. We will.
Consumer Price Index, another index of increased costs. I mean, it's every, I mean, look at fuel loan.
Yes.
Yeah.
So are you seeking, is this, are you seeking?
No, no action this evening, Mr. Mayor. I will be bringing a contract for, simply informational. And also want to report it to everybody that our next meeting is on a Tuesday night due to the 4th of July holiday. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move on to public requests and petitions.
And Mr. Mayor, David Wilmeth is in the audience. And they, they have been able to secure a special event quote, Burns and Wilcox, at a reasonable cost, they say, for four events. And they are not seeking financial assistance from the city. We have consulted Joe Lobber, who Attorney Rich Wood has, has given us a memo that, and they've also drafted before you an indemnity agreement that's laying on a table before you, with a resolution that I believe would be sufficient to not only authorize those agreements, although this is for four events. And I didn't remember that Alderman Barker had said that possibly we do approve this standalone events. And that, so this could be, could be approved for one event, but it does list all four of them. So also a risk management management, a risk mitigation plan was prepared by Pete Emerson. It's enclosed in the agenda packet. And so, and this not being a private event, we would ask that, we'd loan the barricades, but we don't want to be responsible for actually placing them because it's weekend hours, and I don't have people that are on weekend, without paying overtime for them to be there. So it would be, you'd own the street, and you'd return the street to the public when you were done.
Yes, sir.
Is the way, is the way we'd like to work that.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I believe the, has anything changed, Mr. Wilmeth, from the previous presentation?
I apologize. My wife couldn't be here today. This isn't her handwriting. Just a few things. We're here to gain final approval. The last board meeting required the insurance policies. We have those in place as per Jim's paperwork that he has written up. Pete's got a plan to go over with you guys. He's on standby right now. And we just got, decided to draft the June 25th. So we're just getting ahead of ourselves. But that's already been discussed with Jim. We have the liquor licenses in place. We're requesting that we have the 1 million general per occurrence, 2 million aggregate. Liquor liability is 1 million per occurrence, 2 million aggregate. Personal advertising injury, 1 million. The City of Carney will be listed as an additional insured party. The insurance policy will also be listed as primary insurance policy for the event.
Wow.
So it will be charged first in the event of an incident. Let's let it light up. Pete's got something to say as well. He's been a tremendous partner. We can't thank him enough. He's great.
Pete, we're happy to give you the floor if you would like to speak on your mitigation plan.
He's muted. We can't hear him.
One second. You're muted, Pete. He's not muted. Hey, Ryan.
Is that better? There you go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Alderman, for, for giving us the attention here. We, we have been working together to try and make this a joint effort. I apologize I couldn't be in there in person tonight. I'm on the St. Louis side today, and I'll be back in Carney on Wednesday. In the meantime, what we've put together, I think Jim just shared the, the risk assessment that we had done. The only addition that we've made that's separate from the one you would currently have is we did add a section for climate weather. The basic summary of that is we'll, we'll be tracking weather prior to each event, and we'll adjust, we'll adjust our plan as needed. So if something's really looking terrible, we can, we can adjust for that. If we need to move events or activities indoors, we'll do that. And we'll post those updates on social media up to the day of the event. The, the plan as far as safety goes was to work with the city on having a detour sign up on the street to detour traffic that was coming up Washington eastbound and have those, have that traffic be able to travel on East Main Street or on East Third Street as well, being able to go through either of those. I'm sure we'll have some people parking in the, in the parking lot at Rick's Creamery and Diddy's and Anytime Fitness using that parking lot. But that's where we had planned on parking to be, is that parking lot. There's parking behind both Fat Boys and Gino's. There's parking along the street on Washington before, before where we'll have the event in place, parking in the, the City Hall parking lot when it's not business hours. And then the, the additional lot that the city had purchased that's at the corner of North Jefferson and West Main Street as well. The plan was to emplace barriers at the corner of North Grove Street and West Washington as, as well as the westward side of the event as well. And we had talked about using the Jersey barriers. If the, if the city hasn't by that time, that's what we would be able to take care of getting those emplaced. I'll, I'll coordinate to see exactly which barriers we have, and then we can figure out a plan to be able to emplace them. If they're the plastic ones that can be filled up, they're pretty easy to move around, and then we can, we can fill them with either water or, or sand on site, be able to empty them out as needed. But they'll allow us to emplace them and then be able to block off the area and break them down pretty easily at the end of each event and move them out.
Pete, we just have.
What's that?
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood. We, we do have concrete Jersey barriers, but we really don't have good ways of moving them. And what you're imagining is, is nice, but we don't own any water fillable kind of road barriers. And so what all we do have is, you know, pedestrian crowd barriers that are simply used to prevent a person from walking through. It won't prevent a vehicle from traveling through. So we were still hoping that you guys would be willing to pay for off-duty police officers with patrol cars to be blocking the roads. And I, and I think, yeah, you said that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Pete, Pete, we have barriers, and you and David have probably seen them at, you know, the events we've had downtown. They've, they've worked, I think, fine, especially if we have a police car set in front of them. They're like a metal cast iron, probably four-foot panel style barriers.
My correct?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I've, I've seen those, and those, those have worked fine. I do have an email out. I worked, I reached out to Kurt with the KEC and to get some, to share contacts. And so I have an email out to both the police station and the, as well as the fire department. And so I'm, I'm working with them to coordinate and get, we're aiming for two off-duty police officers. And we've already discussed sharing the cost on our end, so it wouldn't be something that we'd be asking the city to, to, to take care of. It's something we'd be able to handle as far as the cost goes on, on those off-duty police officers. The other opportunity I think there might be is to allow an area where, especially the fire department, if they wanted to do any recruiting efforts or anything, we could set up a tent there. And it would, for one, allow them to get some exposure and connectivity into the city. But two, it would allow additional EMS personnel to be on site. And if we can turn that into a community effort at the same time, then we have both checkpoint security at the two sides of the event as well as additional personnel. It would be there to interact with community, but could also be available if there was an emergency.
If you can't tell, Mr. Pete is a captain in the reserves?
Oh. Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, so he, he, if you can tell he's organized and has planned a few things in his time. So thank you again for your service, Pete. Does the board have any questions or items of discussion from the, either of the applicants on their request?
Well, the question still remains, are we going to do all four? We're going to do one at a time? That's the only question I have.
I kind of look at it as a package deal. I would hate to have them have to do this for each individual event.
Yeah, I think they've mitigated, I think, the board's concerns from the last meeting. Paying to have the two off-duty officers. The insurance is what we require anybody else. I want to make the board make sure that you're aware that, you know, like we, except for other events, you know, there is some risk to the city as far as the sovereign immunity amounts, but this is a dollar amount that we require somebody else to get too, so. Does anybody else have any input on the number of events?
I, with, with the understandings that we have tonight, I'm fine with going ahead and approving a package deal.
Yeah, I think I'm, I think for their benefit, it would be best if, if we're going to approve this, that we prove this as a package. That way they can plan ahead for the July, August, September, and October event, so.
And Pete and David, have you heard back from the Fire District or Police Department or any of the neighbors you spoke to?
Pete's been handling that.
Okay.
And I do have, I've been playing phone tag with Captain Stewart because he handles the off-duty police officers. Like I said, we've just been playing and asking him to phone tag. His, his schedule is different than mine, so. And then also I'd like to add, when we're done at the end of the night, as far as my staff, there will not be one cigarette butt, one beer can on the city street, or we wrap up.
We appreciate that.
It will be cleaner than we found it.
All right.
And Mr. Wilmeth, I had this drafted by our, our new attorneys, and I had indicated that Gino's was a party, but it's only written as a contract between us and Fat Boys. I can have that modified if, if we can do all these kinds of changes. If the board wants to choose to approve the resolution, should they, should they be, should both parties be included? And am I leaving somebody out when I do that?
Well, that's a good question for Pete as well. I'm not sure. I mean, I'm assuming all the insurance risk. Pete, were you getting additional insurance as well for the street? Or did you want me to cover all that, which I'm totally okay with?
The, I mean, I, I think on, on our end, we weren't planning to do, we weren't planning to sell liquor on the street or any of that. So the, the, the risk that we currently assume shouldn't change too much. If anything, I might have a tent out there where I sell pretzels and beer cheese or something and do something similar to that. But my, my policy should cover everything that I currently have because we won't really be doing a presence out on the street that would change our risk, our, our risk portfolio.
That being said, I say we leave it?
Yeah.
But is Gino on that policy?
Sorry?
Is Gino on that insurance policy? It's because isn't Gino being part of this deal? Or is it just all on Fat Boy?
Fat Boy secured additional insurance because they were the ones that's going to be selling liquor and sponsoring it out there.
They're going to name us as an additional insured. Whether they name Gino's would be between you guys and Gino's.
Okay.
What about the Creamery? Do we, are they still involved in this or?
They are. They, some dates they are not available for. That's all kind of up in the air too.
And they don't sell liquor anyway, right?
They don't sell liquor.
So they would just be providing some food, selling some food?
They're bringing some barbecue.
Okay.
They're not doing every event. Last time I was notified, they're still trying to gain health permits, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
I've had my hands full with my end.
Sure.
Yeah, I understand.
These are vague.
I'm impressed you guys got all this done at such a fast time. So if there are no other questions from the board, we could read the resolution for approval consideration.
It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a street closure agreement between Fat Boys Grill and Bar and City of Carney to host Saturday block parties.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those? Resolution passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the second item on the agenda this evening.
Mr. Mayor, Star Development is, is looking to build a 12,600 square foot building at 1010 Couchman Drive. At their June the 13th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed site plan, subject to staff comments, after a report from David Pavlich and remarks by board liaison Kathy Barker. It is recommended that the site plan be approved by motion of the board.
Mr. Pavlich, anything from staff?
A couple of months ago.
The plane looks a little familiar.
It looks, that was exactly what I was saying. If it looks familiar to you.
Yeah.
It's, if you picked up the building one block to the south that was proved a few months ago and moved it to this location, you, you wouldn't really know the difference other than it's oriented to one, a different direction.
Was there a reason they moved it? Was there something wrong with that lot that?
No, no.
They're built the same building on both floors.
Yeah, this is a second project, second piece of property, so we would expect to see.
I thought they scrapped that one to do this one.
Two buildings? Nope. Nope, it's just a copy of the other approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval at the last meeting and recommended that we also approve as well. Ron Cowherd is in the audience today instead of Robert Naylor.
Alderman Barker, do you have anything else to add to our report?
I don't. It was pretty much copy and paste, so there was very little discussion.
All right, if there's no questions.
I bet it wasn't copy and paste for the engineer, was it?
I was hoping somebody was going to come to my defense. Thank you, Jim.
I only meant it was copy and paste for the board, not for you, Mr. Cowherd.
No, I'm just teasing you, Jim.
We, we, we appreciate Star Development and your continued work here in our community, Ron. Now, if there are no questions or any other items of discussion from the board, can we consider approval of the commercial site plan at 1010 Couchman Drive for Star Development?
Move that we approved the site plan as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those? Congratulations, Mr. Cowherd. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Thank you all.
Karen.
There are no public hearings. Our old business. We do have an item under new business.
Mr. Mayor, the school has requested that Mosaic street name that is on West Washington be restored back to West Washington. And David Pavlich has purported to create an ordinance that would do that. It's enclosed in 8A of the agenda packet.
Any items of discussion, questions from the board?
Do we have to, what, what does that do to the post office? I mean, we got to submit something to the post office to get that changed?
We don't have to submit anything to the post office. I was already in contact with them. They're aware of that change. We actually, previous ordinance kind of dual-named the street. And Mosaic wanted to use Mosaic Life Care Way, so that's how they were registered in at the post office. All the other utility companies and city water in the county still had the West Washington address. It was just a matter of communicating with the post office what was going on.
Okay, cool.
Would you like me to read by title only?
First reading by title only, please.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 1303-2016 pertaining to Mosaic Life Care Way street name.
Make a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by Kyle Only.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 1303-2016 pertaining to Mosaic Life Care Way street name.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to Alderman discussion, Alderman Barker?
I have nothing this evening.
Alderman Lehman?
Nothing really, other than it's nice to see visible progress on the interchange. With equipment in the median now. It's about 4:30, they have a drilling rig in the center of it. So it looks like they're getting ready to start working on the, the center part of it. I know there's been work going on in the storm part down below, but people tend to buzz right on by that and don't see it. So it's nice to see stuff going on in the median strip, so, yeah, that's all I had.
I think they're getting paired up for the forms for the middle columns?
Yeah.
Great.
Looks like it.
Alderman Holt?
Uh, two things. First of all, there is some rumors going around that the city has moved Fourth of July celebration to the Fourth of July. I ran into that earlier today and had to clarify that, no, it's on the Third of July. I don't know if someone heard the meeting and they, because Mr. Scholl changed his date, if that's why they think we changed our date. I'm not real sure, but it's still on the third. I heard that and I thought, you know what, I better get some clarification because all of a sudden it's like, they're saying that pretty, like, it's matter-of-factly. So I didn't contact them.
They always know more than we do.
I know.
When he called me, I said, no, I don't.
No?
Don't think so.
Okay, because I told him, no, no, as far as I know, it's still on the third. And then my next question is really, it's just a question. Is Mr. Porter doing anything down there with the rock quarry as far as the bridge? Or did he not get that agreement with Clarkson or what's? Because I haven't seen any really activity, I see all the activity on the road, but I don't see any activity over there.
So it's my understanding that Clarkson, which is kind of ironic, the company that he bought that ground from, will be using material from that site for fill. Last time I spoke with Mr. Ford or Mr. Shipley about the progress on any reclamation, they said that there is a lot more dirt than rock on top of that. And so any excessive machine crushing or even blasting is going to be extremely minimal, way less than they anticipated. So that's why there's been, I mean, they've been moving some dirt, I think, but I don't think that they've been doing anything heavy yet.
No, that's what I'm saying, I've seen them moving dirt, but I didn't see them doing any rock stuff, so I didn't know.
It's like, that's positive news.
Yeah, yeah, that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Alderman Spencer?
I just wanted to say that I've had several wonderful comments about our flags and our red, white, and blue patriotic banners that go with them. And so a lot of enthusiasm for the Fourth of July. I also wanted to say that the museum is the happy recipient of a 1830 land grant.
Congratulations.
That is signed by Andrew Jackson. It is regarding approximately 80 acres in the northeast corner of Carney. It was owned by Littleberry Estes. And so since it is Estes and Cave, some of those that got Carney going, we are delighted to have it. And it came to us through a donor from Washington DC. So next time you're able, pop in the museum and see the land, right?
That's great. Thank you for attending the Prey to Hearts Carnival, the finale. I opted to stay in town and do the music in a park, but I didn't realize that Dylan Van Gurpin, Carney grad, was on the select committee. So it looked like you had a good time, nice event.
I enjoyed it, I was very pleased when it came down to it, having spoken with a lot of people there. If it weren't for Kathy Rose, we would not have had a heart. Neither would have Smithville, Excelsior Springs either, or Weston. So we're very lucky that she is a advocate for Carney.
Yeah, I miss seeing it out here, so.
Yep.
All right, well, that concludes Alderman discussion. Can we have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned, everybody have a good evening, thank you.